It being January sixteenth, twenty twenty, this is the Acushnet Planning Board. Their motion to open the meeting.
The motion will be opened.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
With that, this meeting is being audio and video taped for Mass General Law. Gentlemen, if you'd be kind enough to introduce yourselves, starting with you, please, Bill.
Bill Malo.
Brian DeChamis.
Henry Young Town Planner.
Mark Senerizio. With that, I don't know if you gentlemen have had the opportunity to read the minutes from December thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Yeah, I think the motion will be accepted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Give me a second here. What was that, vouchers?
Feeling good.
You're kind enough to sign those, Bill, in case they're wrong. Item number three is the mail. So in Golden Fields Rochester, line, Beehaven, covering the new Mazda dealership on Fifth Street. From Acushnet Cable to all committees, Acushnet Cable would like your committee cooperation in knowing when a change is made in your committee so we may be accurate on our broadcast and bulletin board. Please make any changes to the list and place it on the Acushnet Cable mailbox in the town hall. Also, you can email us at acushnetcable@gmail.com. Thank you, Mr. Gold. If you have any changes, we'll be more than happy to do that. Tell your grandfather, I will take care of it. Take care of this one, Henry, remote. Participation policy. Julie sent that down. We'd like to congratulate Julie too as being now our new town administrator. We wish her nothing but the best luck and thank you for stepping up. Item number four, planner update, we'll take that at the end of the meeting.
Yes, now we'll include item number five.
So item number four, item number five will be at the end of the meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
With that, it being, we are pretty good, six forty-five, Form A, two sixty-five, Main Street. Christine Devant, separate two lots. Mr. Roman Elliott Associates.
Good evening. Good evening. I have a little announcement to make, too. Roman Elliott Associates has been purchased by Zenith Land Surveyors, and I am still a part owner of.
Is that good or bad?
It is good for me. We've got a couple more employees to relieve some of my stress, so it's a great thing. Transition is, uh...
It's going well.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So going forward, we are Zenith Land Surveyors. At last month's meeting, December thirtieth, I have brought this Form A plan. This is the Christine Devant, um, the animal hospital, two sixty-five Main Street, across from, uh, the Creamery.
Okay.
Yes. And I think we have made a motion to approve pending a review by town council, which I'm going to defer to Mr. Young to see if he's got that response.
Thank you, yes, I have. I had a conversation with John Eichman, attorney for Copeland Page. Each of you have an email response from John, and in essence, he's saying, and I'm quoting, "If the lots have adequate frontage and the ways providing the frontage provide adequate access to and onto the lot, the planning board should sign the plan. The plan may create zoning issues, but that is something for the building inspector to determine. The planning board can notify the applicant that the plan may create zoning issues and advise him to consult council, but for his part, I do not see a zoning issue unless the division of lot creates a nonconformity. The garage you referenced already violates the RA setback, it appears." So what he's saying is, and this is often the standard, is this can be allowed, this should be allowed, recommends that we approve it because the division of land isn't making the lot more nonconforming. It already is nonconforming, and all we're doing is dividing the land. So based on that, my recommendation from board is to approve the plan as submitted.
Gentlemen, any questions?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I did have a communication with Jim Merritt, building inspector. He said anything going forward, though, she would need a variance, um, you know, if she was to put another garage or shed up, she'd have to conform to the seventy-five percent actually.
That's correct.
So that means that now everything existing as it is, that we just voted on is okay until she puts something else.
Yeah, not that she plans on doing anything, but she wanted to make a note.
Long as that, you guys understand it and she understands this, okay?
That's a copy for you.
Great, thanks.
With that, you got the mylar?
I do. There is one free ball at the close office from last meeting I did not, uh, supposed to be there, and there are nine more coffins here.
Mylar, sir.
You can start with the mylar, you're handsome, devil.
I get the date, right?
You got magic pen?
What's that, the sixteenth?
With that, while you gentlemen are signing papers, I will run a little early.
There's my paperwork form.
That Form A?
The D, the application, the receipts in there also.
All right, you want to take them as I go?
Twenty twenty on that? I've had some issues in the legal that they said you should put twenty twenty so somebody doesn't try to fill in.
Instead of twenty?
Well, somebody could add the oh-nine or change the date.
Yep. Well, you're right, it's true. Put twenty twenty on them. Not a problem.
I didn't even thought of that, but you're right.
I didn't either, but I'll work it up to the other day.
You've been being a boy, you think that?
So this plan's been approved for over ninety years.
Right.
Yeah, twenty twenty is the time.
Is that the only magic pen we got, man?
Right here.
Big fat ones.
Right here. Yeah, you don't need the fat ones?
I don't need that one.
Yeah, you don't need a big fat one.
Give him that one. You got mine.
See, you got the magic pen?
Don't shake it, my friend. What are you talking about over there?
I'm sorry, I lost my head.
Yeah, you did, man. What's up with that?
You're running for reelection, man, I can't talk to you.
That's right, I might change my mind.
We don't want that, brother, we love you here. Mylar?
You fix the other one, put the twenty twenty on? The present's over?
Yes, I did, yeah.
How you felt the end?
I just fixed it on my eye.
Oh, hey.
Thank you.
Yeah, these end up in a drawer somewhere, right?
Right. Anyway, they changed my title there, that's why I'm saying I'm doing something. It's an intense job, but now I'm the operations manager, I'm the inspector, and I'm an observer. So it's pretty good.
Wow, who's that?
Maybe I'll borrow Andy.
That's hard, Angel.
Yes, it is. Just get ten hours today and I have to come home by now.
I'll take this.
Get the pink dolls, brother.
Are you retired? Unbelievable.
Are you retired, Roger?
Hello?
Dr. Rogers, Brian.
Brian.
Rogers is his other brother from another mother.
Well, my brother would have given, he's retired.
Okay, Form C presentation, Peckham Road, we don't have to wait till seven on this, this is not a public hearing, is it?
Correct, correct.
Okay. While we're running ahead of schedule, we might as well go with that one if you want to.
That's great.
Also, from Mr. Roman Elliott.
This is a plan that kids be pretty familiar with.
This is the one we did two years ago and signed it for the gentleman, and now there are some challenges.
Not really a challenge, but we've got, um...
Had something for the setbacks so we could have a bigger...
Right. Basically, it was approved as a three-lot common driveway subdivision retreat lot. The issue we were having is the retreat lot setbacks of seventy-five feet all the way around.
That was a new rule, correct?
Um, it's been in existence for a while, but Mr. Ruda's got a friend that wants to build a home on the lot D. And to hold the proper setbacks of seventy-five feet all the way around, the back of the house was literally about three feet off the wetland line, and in conversations, we had a quick meeting with Jim Merritt and Merrill Lee, they both asked if there was any way we could pull it forward away from the wetlands more, and Jim came up with the idea of coming back to the planning board with a Form C subdivision versus the common driveway. So what I have done here, and I'll show it to you, it's a little bit easier to see highlighted. Basically, what we did is put a fifty-foot right-of-way over the common driveway. Still has the hammerhead turnaround like it did on the common driveway. The drainage is all the same, the grading is still the same. Basically, what it does is allows us to pull this house closer to the right-of-way, so it's still being seventy-five feet back, only like thirty feet back, which now gives us almost twenty-four feet to the wetland line versus everybody's gap, two or three. Yes, I have to request a public hearing here tonight for next month. I have to get certified, I brought it to the south, which I will do, but basically, this is just a informal meeting to discuss if anybody had any questions now as to what we were doing, and I'd be happy to try to answer if I could.
Gentlemen, any questions?
See, and I'm going to ask Josh if he wants to set something over there. The roadway, if you drive on Peckham Road, you can clearly see that that roadway is built, the retaining walls, the oilways that are on this plan, the drain structure, most of the drain structure we replaced except for this one four-way here at the, uh, part of the hill. And you could physically, you know, you felt like you needed to take a ride out there and take a look at it to see if it's...
Was there anyone else removed on this property? I remember, this was last year, we did this one.
Here was.
Because of the two yard down.
Yes, out front, yes, nothing out back.
That's gone now?
It's not gone yet, no. This, this house out back, as Mr. Ruda said, is under construction, foundation's in. Uh, so things are moving along, utilities are in about three poles in, and then it's going underground, basically from this culvert, it's going underground to the three houses out back, so...
Gentlemen, any questions?
As you can see where the former lot lines were coming down, and now they're actually a little bit cleaner to see on this.
For some reason, I remember this. It was a while.
No, we came, it was a year or so.
Yeah, that's right. It was in front of us quite a bit. I had a couple meetings, so...
Well, that's going to make it cleaner and make the building inspector happy.
Happy. And I think Merrill Lee also, probably a big component of this change. So let's go through the process next month of, uh, Form C subdivision, public hearing, area, get all the butters notified, and, but I would like to request that at this...
We have to set a date and a time.
July.
Right. And Donna would like as much time, at least, uh...
Yes, you do.
She'd like five weeks.
Four or five weeks.
Because she has to do, uh...
Today's the sixteenth.
Advertise it some paper.
One, two, three, four, five, the twentieth, good?
Got a Thursday?
That's a Thursday.
That's one that sounds good to me.
All right. Okay with you guys, everybody? John, you, you going to be somewhere, you going to go?
I'm going to be somewhere, but I think I can get somebody to, uh...
You have a whole new crew now, so...
Yes, I do, I have support now, so I'll just be myself and I.
You're going to take nights off?
Actually, surprise recon now for the first time, sounds pretty good.
Uh, six forty-five, good?
Yep, six forty-five.
Sounds great.
Okay. Six forty-five, Form C, what's the address on Peckham?
One, I've used one fifty-eight.
I don't see any problems if this makes everything, building inspector happy in the end, then we'll go with that.
Well, really, nothing's changing except...
No, except...
Except what it is.
Right, because now the frontage is going to be on the right-of-way that's...
Because of the setbacks, correct?
Right. Nothing really can you, except that.
Exactly.
No one wants to say.
Right, and actually, the replication area's been done, a lot of work has been done. I've seen it. Yeah.
Looks good. Had enough time?
In a private way, you know, in its entity, through the roadway, maintenance agreements and all that.
Five weeks, Donna wants five weeks? But she wanted to jack it to the twenty-seventh, it's up to you guys.
Donna might put it to the twenty-seventh.
At school vacation weekend, I don't think anybody's...
Oh, this, the seventeenth?
Yes.
Okay. So why don't we jack it to the twenty, is that going to make a difference? With the children or anything? No plans, everything, everything fine?
I think it would be.
One week isn't going to make a difference, I know.
Okay, let's make it to twenty-seventh, then.
Two years later.
Next week, the twenty.
Great, that sounds...
Yep, is that okay?
Now we get to see ya.
Yes. Might as well miss it.
With that, we'll put all the stuff together, join in on what we're doing, and Donna will take care of it, advertise it, did it, did it, the butters list.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
So the forms are coming up.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Seven fifteen, we're running early. If the folks are here for a special permit, for site review, presentation, ten fifty Main Street, map seven, lot twenty-four, and lot twenty-four B, Acushnet Solar, Corey Madera Site Tech, are you folks here? Oh!
You got the big boss today.
It's your lucky day.
Holy mackerel.
Steve, what are you doing, huh?
Well, listen, I miss you guys, so I'll be, uh, show up for a game.
Oh, yeah.
Good to see you. The record, Steve Geo, so at Site Tech, and with me tonight is Alan Flatt. Alan's coming in here now. Alan's with Acushnet Solar, so, um, as the board probably knows, we're here tonight to introduce the project to you. We made the official filing, Dr. Clark, it's in your office, bringing the balance of the documents in this season for you. I'm not sure how far you want us to get into a description, a brief overview of what we've done so far and where we're going, hopefully going.
You can do what you like, we still have to have the public hearing, and we can go from there, it's up to you folks what you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, we'll give you a brief introduction. We've already met with conservation, so this is a project on Main Street, um, ten fifty Main is the location of the property. On the overall locus map, we've got Main Street on the western border of the site, we're on the east side of the street, um, just north of Leonard and just south of the mobile home park, Clem's Way is located just to the north of us here. This is a, about a thirty-five acre site, and, take it, an overview of the existing site conditions in the area we're proposing to work. Same general orientation with north to the top of the drawing, Main Street here on the western border. The existing house and garage and barn located here, close to Main Street. This is primarily an open field, heading to the back or heading to the east in the property, all the way to the back until we hit a tree line several thousand feet back from Main Street, and that's, tree line is actually embedded into in the wetlands, so there's a little green shading you see here, here, and here. These are delineated wetland areas, so from here, heading east, it stays wet. There's a pocket of wetlands that goes to the south and a pocket of wetlands that creeps onto the property and goes to the north. We've got the one-hundred-foot buffer zone depicted in a little heavier line. We first started evaluating the property, we did the wetlands delineation, topography, you'll see a series of test pits have been done so to verify groundwater and soil conditions throughout the site. So that's our initial evaluation that was completed. Once we, um, completed that phase of the project, uh, the study of the project area, we worked with Alan's group with developing a solar field. This is a one-point-three megawatt DC project.
Correct, yep, one-point-three DC.
Um, and what we wanted to do is keep this kind of off the roads, far back onto the site, and topographically, this is kind of low here down on Main, comes up to the crest of the hill, the crest of the hill is here, then it starts sloping generally back here and then slopes in kind of a broken fashion, some flow to the north, some to the south, but essentially, we kept all of the solar activity about five-hundred-and-fifty feet east of Main Street. As with most of these projects or all of these projects, we have a fence surrounding the entire development, evergreen plantings that we're proposing along the buffer on this side of the site, with access to the development originating on Main Street on the south end of the property, coming in, and then there'll be a gated entrance here, bringing access complete into the site with a little turnout area here at the far east end of the project. You see the panels are kind of laid out here and here in two primary blocks with the equipment pads located adjacent to the access drive here for long-term service and maintenance as needed. As I indicated earlier, we have already met with conservation because some of the activity is within the hundred-foot buffer zone of the wetlands on this site, and you see again the buffer zone extending here, here, and here. What we did was we kept all the solar panels outside of the hundred-foot buffer zone and all of the construction activity in the upland portions of the site, so there are no proposed wetland alterations associated with this project. We did add a, based on our analysis of the drainage flows through here, a stormwater maintenance basin, a stormwater detention basin on the north end of the site, fairly shallow, only about a foot and a half deep, so again, kind of kept it kind of broad, worked with the natural topography, building just a little bit of a berm here to retain some of the water before it discharges to the north. That portion of the project, the work in the buffer zone, has been reviewed by conservation. They have actually issued an order of conditions approving the wetlands and drainage-related items for the project under their jurisdiction, and obviously, your jurisdiction goes beyond those basic elements. But I think the one, a couple of other points on the project, you'll notice, we're working within an existing field, so there's very little change in drainage characteristics in this project versus a lot of these solar projects where you're getting into heavily wooded areas. So that's a positive from a drainage alteration standpoint. We've maintained existing topography everywhere with the exception of the drainage system being created here. We flattened the grade on the access drive here a little bit, just so it's a little bit more stable conditions, a little bit of cleaning up of the grading along the access drive, but really, this is all in here following natural topography, um, and we're doing a little bit of grade change here to just flatten out the slope, and that's the extent of the grading on the site, so it's very little earthwork, very little movement of dirt around the site. Most of the site is workable with putting in our racking system with exactly the topography that exists there now, so we think again, it's a low-impact form of development, and again, with it being isolated a little bit further off the road, we think it's buffered from the surrounding area to the maximum extent possible. And there are gates being provided for access, as I indicated, we would have a Knox box for emergency vehicle access here at the entrance point, there's a second gate being proposed here and here. As Alan indicated the other night with conservation, the arrangement with the landowner is to allow them access to the solar area, they want to bring sheep onto the site, and this will give you an area for them, they actually do some grazing apparently within the solar area, and that's acceptable to the applicant, so you get a dual use of the property, trying to maintain some of the rural use on the land, and I guess that's a brief overview.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I do, I live directly across the street from that, and that road he's going to put in, right now, every time it rains and in spring, there's a lake there, pretty much almost the size of Lake Street.
On Main Street, sir?
Right on, right in that bottom field where the road is going to go.
Yep.
Now, the people who live just south of that, when they built that house, they filled in the culvert. There used to be a culvert that rained that whole length, all the way down, the water would run and into the existing stream, three or four houses down on the field. They filled in the culvert, okay. We brought it up to the conservation, they talked to them, they dug it up, they put it back in, okay, they filled it in again. So now every time it rains, and I'm talking not a whole lot of rain, we get a lake. Springtime? Springtime, my pump runs twenty-four seven for two months. Because all that water is going underground to my house. You're gonna put a road there, that means you're gonna be raising it up higher than the elevation of the road. You have to. You have to raise it up higher than the road to build a road there. In which case, you're blocking off any kind of excess where that water could possibly go. So where's that water gonna go?
Number one, this is the initial hearing, okay?
I'm just saying.
No, absolutely. We want to talk about it, and you guys, something for you guys to look at.
I live right at the side of the property and I have the same problem. So when it, and we had flooding maybe within the last couple of weeks.
Oh, yeah.
And that was so high, and what happens is it goes right into my property, into the basement again.
People next door to me have the same problem.
Well, let me tell you, this is just the initial introduction. We have a public hearing coming up. So this is good for these folks to understand what you folks are gonna come in and say at the public hearing. Okay? Gives them something to look at, and I'm sure that the bodies will take a look at it. I understand what you're saying, and I think because those people, I don't know who they are, who had a culvert and filled it in and took it out.
Well, they're gone.
And filled it in again. Should have something down.
Well, those people who did it are gone. These people now own the place.
Okay.
And it's not their responsibility because it was done when they moved there.
But is that culvert on your property or Tom's property, man?
I believe it's on.
It's on Tom's property.
Okay. Can you take a look at that? You can do the best you can.
You own what, ten feet in?
I'm not sure.
I mean, the town owns what, ten feet off the road, right?
I am not sure, sir. I have to do the thought.
And we don't own right up the road.
No.
Okay.
It's a shoulder. Something to look at, correct? This is, it, listen, it gives them a heads up to take a look at this because when you come in in front of the public hearing, then they will have something to say or not say, or go from there. I appreciate your output on this.
Can I just say, Pat, something else?
You certainly may.
Then, why is this, why is this solar farm being considered close to residential areas?
Because probably the Massachusetts laws say they can put a solar farm anywhere they want.
Really?
I mean, where they're gonna be up on that hill, I mean, on the other side of Hillbush.
You're really not gonna see it.
I have a problem with that because you're not gonna see it, are you?
Yeah.
But that's, you know, it's not the point. The point is this has, there hasn't been enough research on exactly what the, you know, what can come of it, you know?
Well, we already have some solar farms.
They could leak into the soil. How do we know, you know?
That's what'll come up in the public hearing. We already have solar farms.
We don't have enough information.
We've been through this procedure for the last five, six, seven years. We have a good handle on it. Most of them that come through do everything that we ask them to do. And we cannot stop a solar farm from going in.
The only other question I have is that, what's the impact on the animals? I mean, there's a lot of deer and stuff back there that, that's their home.
I believe in this particular case, this is all fields. We have had some that have been in forests where they cut the trees down and impact it all. Long as they do the fencing and they put some shielding up, everything is fine.
So the fencing is seven feet tall by code because we have to do as a minimum and we're raising?
No, I mean, that's where they graze.
Right, so they'll graze, they'll graze outside the edges, I guess is how that will work.
Well, they jump over the fence.
Oh, they jump over the fence, join the lambs.
Yep, that's right. They got sheep, sheep, you don't even have to mow it. No, you got sheep that are on the lawns.
That's about it.
I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I'm just telling you, this is their initial, uh, paperwork to put in. We will have a public hearing. The butters up to, the butters up to three hundred feet will be invited in. And we can hash it out all then, but I'm glad you came in for this, so they understand what's gonna come about.
When is this public hearing gonna be?
It'll probably looks like it is February twenty-seventh.
I'm sure we'll have rain between now and then.
I hope rain and not snow.
If it's snow, it melts. It melts.
It's the same thing.
Doesn't matter. Any questions, gentlemen? There's no tree. You've got no trees down, nothing. Everything is all just a big field. Can't ask for better. What do we need? Form C, we got enough time, fifteen minutes enough of that. We'll bring these folks in at seven o'clock. So I have six forty-five.
Fifteen minutes for the form C.
Yep. We have a public hearing for this one, which is special permit for Acushnet Solar LLC, ten fifty Main Street. We'll make that hearing at seven PM. Is that okay with you, gentlemen?
Very good.
Twenty-seventh, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good to see you, Steve.
Always a pleasure.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
What I had to schedule, say, I am, yeah. Seven thirty discussion, Roy Morrison, three solar proposals, go over nine Main Street, zero nice lane, and one sixty-five Highway. Please come in, gentlemen, and introduce yourself.
Yeah, so, good evening. My name's Robert Asers. My partner, Roy Morrison. Um, we have a solar development company. We have three projects, small-scale projects, so not nearly at the size of the prior applicant. Uh, three small-scale projects that we're, uh, proposing, uh, for Acushnet. Roy, do you have the handouts?
I have the handout. I have the handout.
And just to give you a little background about our company, so Rory and I, I have, I come from a real estate background, um, and own and manage real estate. Rory has the energy background. Um, we met on a project that we worked on jointly out in Beckett, Massachusetts. It was a large-scale scope, solar project.
Beckett, where is Beckett? Is that out west?
Just keep going west on the Mass Pike. You can't go any further.
I'll be a leader.
Yeah, exactly. And Rory and I, of course, during the time they're in development, we had a lot of discussions about solar. And we thought that there was a niche that was not being serviced. Either you had projects that were rooftop projects or you had large-scale projects like the one that was prior, uh, presented just, uh, prior to ours. We thought that there was a unique opportunity to build something a little bit smaller, um, with less impact on the land. But at the same time, um, what we found, and we've really looked at, we've talked to a lot of farmers, a lot of, uh, landowners. So these are really small-scale solar projects, ground mount systems that were, or that's sort of our niche, I would say. And, you know, I think the, the thing to remember about, uh, in our experience, the people that we're talking to that are interested in these projects, they're, they're homeowners that are not necessarily tree huggers or environmentalists. These are folks that need the money and they see that revenue from these projects as a way to supplement their retirement, to be able to buy, uh, the medicines that they need or the groceries. And really, it's not that they're in love with solar, it's that they need, this is a, this is a way to supplement their income. And they're using their property, uh, to the best of their ability to be able to do that. And, um, so those are the people that we've been talking with, really salt-of-the-earth people. These are not people with huge landowners that have a ton of money, that are looking to make millions of dollars on this. These are small-scale projects that, and if they require a lot of land alteration, like maybe some other projects, they don't work for us and they don't work for the, for the landowners. So they have to be, uh, really fit well into the, into the, um, first of all, they have to comply with all the zoning bylaws. We don't, we're not gonna, um, you know, there's no way you can usurp the, the bylaws and the state laws. But if there are, um, you know, at the same time, we try to make them so that there is as little impact to the site as possible. Because if there is more than just a, you know, any minor changes, it's not feasible for us to do these projects. So that's, um, sort of the overview of our company and our, and our philosophy. And then as far as specifically about the projects, Rory can talk a little bit about each one of these projects in particular. Um, I guess our goal tonight, just as a last thought, is that we don't have a formal, uh, submission at this point. Our goal was to come in and get feedback from the, the board to see what we would need to do. And I think, uh, the prior application was, is a good indication of what you have to deal with. You have to deal with the neighbors and the concern that neighbors have about, uh, visuals and about water runoff and all those types of things. So, uh, I think we understand that from other projects that we work on. But Rory can talk a little bit more about the specific sites.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yes, sir.
Is there a maximum or a minimum acreage that you gentlemen need to put this particular type of solar farm up?
Typically, we look for two acres of land.
Okay. No, just a question I had to ask. It looks like a great deal, but...
Yeah, so typically, um, the, you know, so that the, so the smaller systems we do with twenty-five kilowatts.
Which is just a fraction of what the, the size of the system you saw. It would be twenty-five kilowatts is a hundred and eight panels. Just to put in perspective, that is the same size as eight parking spaces, eight brick, full-size parking spaces. So we're not big.
Is this for the people on the land or is this to be hooked into Eversoos?
To Eversoos.
Okay.
Yeah. And the, uh, so each of the, well, generally, each of those twenty-five kilowatt arrays have a hundred feet long and about twenty-five feet wide. So that's, you know, so a hundred kilowatts would be four of them, spaced about twenty feet apart. So it would be like eight, an area roughly eighty by a hundred feet. You know, it's like eight thousand square feet with water around that. So it's around ten, eleven thousand square feet for the, for a hundred kilowatts. Or like a tenth of an acre or a twelfth of an acre.
Unique idea, gentlemen. Any questions?
This area on twelve oh nine Main Street.
Sure.
I live at three houses left, but I'm just asking. I just, I know that lot's heavily treated, so that's not a problem with putting them there? Or you plan on taking any of the trees out of there or?
I think that the, the array is shown there without taking trees on.
Okay.
But I'm not saying, you know, we have to take a look at the wetlands there and setbacks from the boundary, so it may shift a little bit. I think the only trees that we would, you know, potentially have to take are would be the ones that are right in his backyard. That Mr. Ferrer's parked out there, um, those ones in the middle. If anything, it would have to ship, shift closer to the road, I think, that would be it.
I know between them and the church, there's some tall spruces or whatever you want to call them.
Yeah, yeah.
And same thing on the front side, there's the big El Alms there and...
Yeah, I mean, I guess our goal is, you know, we don't want to get into land clearing. It's expensive.
Right.
Nobody likes it, and if we don't have to cut a tree down, we don't want to do that. So, you know, our goal is not to cut any trees down.
So I guess each individual site is unique by itself, depending on the conditions?
Yes, yeah. That is very true. We found that out. Every site is very unique.
Well, like you said, you're just coming in and asking us and go for, is there a, Henry, is there a certain amount of ground clearance and foliage we have, or anything, this is long as explained, ground mounted solar, right? So you still have to come into the right...
We have a, a process, if you could stick around.
Sure.
Go up to the meeting. I can go through the process with you.
Sure.
But it includes, you know, public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
And that typically gets continued for a couple of months.
Okay.
Because we have to, um, have a third-party review by our engineer.
Okay.
Of these plans, which you will pay for.
Right.
Amongst other things, besides receiving comment, we get an estimate for decommissioning.
Right.
A fee which has to be posted prior to...
A bond, so they'd be looking for a bond for decommissioning, yeah?
Right, just to cover, you know, city liabilities on the part of town.
Right.
So I can go through the, some of those points with you. We have a special permit which has thirty-nine points, which would help you if you knew what those were in the front end.
Sure, that's why, I guess that's why we're here today, to hear, to learn these things and to talk to you directly. You know, those, that's great, and it seems like that Acushnet has already seen its fair share of solar projects, so it's, you know, not every town that we've been to has, so it's, um, you know, so you guys can teach us a few things.
We've been doing this for, I think, five, six, seven years.
Yeah, so that's good, okay. You know exactly what you need and what you might then.
We appreciate your correction.
No, no problem. If you tell them to have the time, Henry's more than willing to talk to you after to show you everything you need.
That would be great.
We still have a couple more appointments.
Yeah. If you could stick around, we'll be happy to...
Actually, we're not doing too bad.
That is good, though.
Yep.
Keep it going, then. Get out of here.
Oh, well, great.
Thank you.
I don't know if the folks are in for a solar special permit, zero wing lane.
Yes, sir.
Solar project team, C V E North America.
Yes.
Mr. Smith, the lane manager.
Thanks for having us back.
And we can be brief as well.
Take all the time you want, you guys.
Drop off and, drop off and set up a public hearing.
Uh, there's a pressure. I'm Ryan, I'm from C V E North America. This is Dan from Atlantic Engineering. They're helping us out. I'll give you the background. I think everybody kind of knows the area of Wing Lane. And we're now the, we're actually the owner of the zero wing lane, the entire lot. We are working on purchasing eighty-eight Wing Lane, as you know, because we have a special permit there. We're working through everything. I think we're on, we're on a good track over there. We've got a special permit and we're working through the engineering and, um, we might be building out there. So we don't have any questions for that, but I just wanted to kind of orient to where we, where we are. And, um, uh, so, as you know, there's already a solar facility here. This is a great area for solar. Uh, we think because it's already cleared, there's very little wetlands out there, especially where we're gonna be working, and I can mention that just briefly.
This is across from the other existing...
Yeah, so if you're driving, if you're driving down Wing Lane towards the end, and this is the, uh, Everso substation here. But there's sort of a little driveway and parking area. This is what's existing. That was done like, uh, twenty, not twenty, well, twenty sixteen, I think.
Well, that is...
My Mr. Rocket, you're familiar with that one?
Yep.
So we purchased all that, and this was, this was never developed, and it's a great site for solar. It's right, and as you remember, this is a giant transmission corridor.
Yep.
The neighbors actually are friends of ours now and they like us, so we don't have residential housing back there to keep their traffic down and things like that. So this is sort of an unused space. Uh, it's relatively small. I think it'll end up being like a five hundred KW AC project. So it's probably about, this is a little bit smaller than this in terms of land use, but the, the panels have a little bit more power now, so it'll probably equal out where they're about the same size. So, uh, the site's already cleared. There's no wetlands out in the area. We put in a little driveway like the other projects, so it'll all be fenced around, seven-foot-high fence with a little money corridor underneath it. We'll plant some evergreens along the road there, make it look all nice. And, uh, what else we have done?
Fencing around gates, trees.
Fencing gates. We'll put a lockbox out there for you.
Yep.
Make the fire chief happy. There's a building out there, a little shed. We'll take care of that, clean it up a little bit, make it look nice out there. So we're gonna take care of the one, the barn across the road, too. Talk to the fire chief a little bit, see if he wanted to help us out with that. He hasn't come back to me, but he was thinking about it.
He always has something to say.
Where's the connection point to the...
Yeah, there's a pole right here.
There's, uh, there's a house somewhere back there, isn't there?
Down here.
That's it, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Two of them, I think. I talked to, I think there's two different lots back there.
Okay, yeah, but they're way, way back, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure those folks will be in.
Yeah, we think so. I mean, the benefit of the project is I know a lot of the neighbors I've talked to, I mean, this is, I mean, it's been a nuisance area, especially the two buildings and people going back there to party and do all kinds of things, and the police been back there and there were weird things. And I think with our, a little bit of lighting, a presence taking down the buildings, I think that's gonna help, but somebody even actually made some people... When we were, when we were here for the, uh, special permit for eighty-eight, people came and spoke in our favor and we were pretty happy about that. I think that's the only time that's ever happened in Massachusetts. I'm gonna keep saying that until somebody corrects me, but, uh, yeah, so hopefully we're helping out a little bit. It's a, it's a good site for solar.
No problem. I don't know, I don't know what to give these guys for time. But the first one said, what, we give them half an hour each?
I'm...
Public hearing?
Maybe so.
Uh, this one shouldn't be too bad, but from that first one, they would just say, it sounds like there'd be a little, uh, contention that they don't want to put in because of the road that we've been through. So we give them half an hour. Bring you, are you folks gonna fill out a form and all that stuff?
Probably not for the next meeting. I don't think we'll be ready, prepared to submit, um, by the time that you, these public hearings are gonna be issued, so we'll probably have to...
Put you folks in at seven thirty on the twenty-seventh. Is that okay?
Um, hey, Jeff, we can do the twentieth, or is that, uh, another time there?
No, can't do the twentieth. We don't have enough people here.
Sounds good. We're in for the twenty-seventh.
Okey-dokey.
Is it seven fifteen or seven thirty?
Seven thirty. Seven thirty.
Okay.
I'll give that other one half an hour, the first one, I know there might be some challenges with that.
Yep.
Uh, we're all set there, you, you know all the paperwork, everything you have to.
Yeah, I think so. Henry, what do you think, what do you say the timeline is for, I mean, I think we know the process, I think we've been through this before. We can kind of accept the same.
Typically, it's, you know, two to three months, two, three meetings. Because we have to, you know, again, have the third party review.
Yep.
Uh, by our engineers, so they're familiar with this, with your other, uh, array system, so I don't think it'll be a lengthy review. So count on three, we'll shoot for two.
Okay, is it the same company?
Yeah, well, it's, uh, it used to be T and S, that's definitely called.
Now it's T and S, okay.
Same company, different name.
Yep.
Gentlemen, you guys got any questions for these handsome gentlemen? You know, we've been through this, do you know what you're going to go through?
Thanks a lot, you got the paperwork for them?
Great.
Are your plans set soon?
Yep, right now. Appreciate it, thank you.
Something wrong, guys? We've been for long here tonight. Usually we're running late. With that.
We're way ahead here.
Huh?
We're way ahead here.
Are we going to throw these people out for us to have the planner meeting or? Henry, we don't need a private meeting, do we?
No, no, we're, I'm not going to speak in specifics.
Okay. Uh, first one is probably the budget discussion or whatever, however you want to do it. You got the planner update and you've got, uh, a couple things you want to talk about.
I was going to just enjoy the four and five.
Okay.
Uh, let's do the budget first, since that time you were preparing budgets.
Phil says he's running this year, he wants a raise.
Nice.
That'd be nice, that'd be a beautiful thing. With a raise from zero.
Exactly.
Two on two.
Right.
Why don't they get three?
Exactly, okay. Uh, so the, uh, the, the only real change was you have two percent for salaries, that's across the board in the town. So I will see in the hearing, I know this is really small print, but in this line item, uh, or column for F Y twenty-one, department request, you'll see it's, there's just a slight increase from the year before of two percent for the, uh, the agent salary, clerical salary and planner salary.
No problem, we might have to, uh, jack the agent up that stormwater, right?
Right.
Okay, I don't know if there's, uh, well, they want zero.
We, we supply the agent with, um, I mean, she said for two percent like everybody else, two percent increase. But her, we're only partly funding her salary.
Okay.
Concom.
Does the other, okay, cool.
Does the, her salary.
Thank you. So that's a two percent, he'll be happy.
And then beyond that, we'll discuss the, uh, we're on the cusp of redoing the master plan.
Yep.
So that would be something that.
Absolutely, that new master plan is coming up and last year was, uh, last year, twenty years ago.
Right.
Holy, it's been twenty years, I can't believe it. I like to put a thing together, Henry, I don't know if you want to do it or not, but, uh, put something on the wall and something that we can send out to these people that what we did in the twenty-year plan twenty years ago.
Yep.
And what was completed, I think we did at almost three quarters, maybe more than that.
It's incredible that, you know.
It's unbelievable, you did a phenomenal job.
Well, the, the community, it was a great team effort.
Yep.
And there was a lot of public input, so there was a lot of buy-in from the public, uh, on the recommendations of the master plan. Often in communities, master plan sits on a shelf, collects dust, but it's really been the playbook for a Krishnet for the past decade.
It's been phenomenal.
Yeah, but it's time to redo it, so, um, I guess we intend to start that, uh, July first.
Yep.
So we'll budget for that as well.
Absolutely. Does that have a different line item?
So we'll have to, it'll probably just be a plus up on the planner.
Okay.
Line item.
Yep. Great. And with that, there's nothing else, we can discuss this other one afterwards, right? Item five?
Correct, I think, if we just vote on that and then give you, uh, you the permission to, we'll just negotiate with that.
Yep.
Uh, additional cost would be for the offering of the next master plan. By the way, we're all going to be very much involved in that.
It's, this is.
There are a lot of meetings that we hold, sometimes on Saturdays, um, sometimes in the evening.
Auditorium at the school, bring all, anybody that wants to come in, get everybody's ideas, it's just, it's a great thing, but there's stuff is you gentlemen on the planning board, because I'm going to delegate.
You gotta delegate, you gotta delegate.
I'll be there with you, we've done it before and it's, it's a good experience. I mean, the majority of the people in a Krishnet want to keep open space. You know, that's why everything the way it is, I mean, we've got those developments here and here, but everybody says, why don't your taxes go down? Well, the people in town, they want, they want open space, we all want open space.
Wow.
That's right. And if you don't have industry and you've got open space, you got to pay for it. So it'll be a good thing, it'll, it'll be, it'll be a lot of great people. There'll be ups and downs and ins and outs, and people don't like this, and people don't like that, but that's fine. With that.
So my recommendation is to approve the budget and then approve, um, the Mark and I to, uh, negotiate the increase in cost for the writing of the master plan.
We're going to make a motion.
Yep.
Make a motion with the budget and the master plan.
Do a second.
My second, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you very much. And with that, item number five, we'll take care of that.
Yes. So, um, you may be familiar with the Catino's, um, solar farm. So there were some issues during construction which arose and subsequently there was a lawsuit. Um, the plaintiff is, uh, the Leary family and, um, the defendants are here, so are the developer and we're part of that as well as the defendant. So that's, um, going to be going to land court, um, or that's the expectation, it's going to be going to land court. Uh, we've been in contact, obviously, with Copeland Page, who will be representing the planning board in the town. Um, there's a pre-trial conference that happens first and then it goes to trial. So we are providing, um, you know, all the documentation that we have from that process to Copeland Page. I have some correspondence which I'll pass out to, which, because it's in, um, because now there's an active lawsuit, it's not something we should discuss. So I will just give you some information to read, which summarizes the current status.
You gentlemen, do you have any free time?
Mm-hmm.
You don't need to do it tonight?
I got you.
With that, is there anything else?
Uh, just, um, I want to cover each of these. I also have a copy of the summons, which is here. If you'd like to read it, I've already got one, if you have a copy. And then finally, there was a, a, um, open, uh, meeting law complaint that was filed against, uh, none other than Jim Barrett and myself for a meeting that we had for the purpose of mitigating impact on the viruses resulted in a proper, uh, of this dispute. So in that meeting, which included the town administrator, myself and Jim Barrett, which was not a public meeting, for whatever reason, um, a complaint was filed. It's sort of moot point because it was not a public meeting, uh, but we're taking action to add that dismissal. And that's it.
Sounds good to me, Henry.
Gentlemen, any questions on anything? All set?
Make a motion, we adjourned.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.